This is the item that was before the Board of Trustees was, I believe, tabled. It is now coming back after the Downtown Development Authority Board met yesterday and approved funding for the match to the road commission's 50% of the cost of the project. So there's a 50-50 match, the DDA is sort of footing the bill for the match. All the township board is being asked to do is to approve the agreement to go forward with the project with the understanding that the match is being paid by the Downtown Development Authority or out of Downtown Development Authority funds. Are there any questions or comments?
Will be good.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Trustee, or Flintoff.
It's okay. Question, the SiO Township Agreement, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the numbers here. The road commission submits an invoice to the township for 80% of estimated costs of set improvements for the SiO Township's portion, and then it's the remainder that comes in. But just to be clear, we pay for only 50% of the total cost of the project, and you're saying all of that would be covered by the DDA?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So if you look at the next page, it spells out the costs. I think it's a little easier to understand there. I think what that means is, if I understand it correctly, is that of the total cost of 205,000, the 102,500 is the match, and the 80% is 80% of that 102,500.
What about the estimated amount to be paid?
Yes, that is a little troublesome. And when this was reviewed by the township attorney, that they, the township attorney raised that question, what happens if the cost is higher? We posed that question to the road commission, and they said, then the cost is higher and the 50% goes up. It's also possible that the cost would be lower than what they've estimated, in which case the township would, with DDA funds, be paying less than the 102,500. But there's only one road commission, and it's sort of, we have to sort of work with the road commission we have. Are there any other questions? Trustee Vogel, and then trustee Corto.
Right, so I just want to recognize Supervisor Hathaway, I'm really getting on this. To me, this is, and this is one of those examples, without a township manager, this really hit everybody as a bit of a surprise when it came up a few weeks ago. And I just want to recognize the supervisor for getting on this, getting up a learning curve, working with the DDA, working with the road commission. Thank you, well done.
Trustee Corto.
I have a question about DDA funding this project. I think that's a great and creative solution for an unexpected cost. I, I just want to make sure that I understand clearly. I, I thought the DDA funding was for capital improvements, and this seems more like a maintenance cost. Can you, can you explain the DDA's thinking there? And then I have a, a follow-up comment that I'd like to make about the road commission's process on this.
I, I see that the treasurer has, has a response in mind, so I will defer to the treasurer Palmer.
That is story, man. The DDA was formed for two reasons. First and foremost was to get water to all the people along Jackson Road because of Gellman. We decided then to take it to our western border. Water's not expensive. Jackson Road, IE, and also roads, what's the term I want? Connect, not connecting, because they don't really connect, but the roads going off, enterprise, your, you know, your business park road.
Not side roads?
The side roads, thank you, Will. Because Jackson Road, the choice was we do a boulevard, or we do a five-lane road, which is, can be a total disaster. We had talked to people in other areas of the state when all of this was being researched, and they said, don't do it. It's more expensive, but don't do a five-lane road. So anyway, that was part of the purpose of the DDA when the, all of the initial paperwork of why we wanted to do it, that was it. So they've always been involved in the roads. They have already done some maintenance on, you'll have to help me here, Enterprise Drive, I think, was one. Again, it was some of these side roads going into some of our business area. And that's been fairly recent, within the last few years. So I think we could look at this as another part of that. Now, maintenance needs to come up. And it's, you know, and I know the DDA, from what I understand, really hashed this over.
And, and we did, just to add on to what treasurer Palmer was saying, in the meeting yesterday, the DDA board sort of wrestled with this question. Several members of the public commented at the beginning of the meeting, sort of raising this question, you know, is this an appropriate use of DDA funds? Is this more maintenance rather than, I don't know, capital improvement? And I think this is, in some ways, that it raises a larger question about what, what kinds of, what categories of capital improvements, are capital improvements, and what kinds of things are, fall more into the category of maintenance? We had a presentation from Matt McEnell from the road commission, in which, you know, he clarified what he had clarified for the board, what he clarified for me, and that is that the township has funded culvert projects, you know, to extend the life of culverts or to replace culverts entirely, but it's always been as part of a, a larger road project. It's a part of why this sort of struck people, you know, as being sort of unusual, is that it's the first time that SiO Township has been approached in recent memory to fund just a culvert, as opposed to a culvert, you know, combined with some other kind of road improvement. So in this instance, it's, I guess it's sort of pulled, it's pulling the culvert away from what would be more, you know, sort of typical kind of project for the DDA, which would be a, a road improvement, a road repaving. That's something that the DDA has invested in almost every year, and has a plan in place, you know, so tentative plan to do systematically these side roads along the Jackson Road corridor. But this culvert, this freestanding sort of culvert project sort of, you know, sticks out in a way. So it's, I think it's a good question for the newly reformed Roads Advisory Committee to examine in terms of how to budget for these projects and how to categorize them. But I think it's also something that the DDA board is actively sort of, you know, wrestling with as it engages in its own sort of master plan, strategic plan process.
Thank you. And then just following up on that, I agree that the Local Roads Advisory Committee will be very helpful in helping navigate between Washtenaw County Road Commission and the township. I, I read that local road packet that was provided to us, and I found it very difficult from the information provided there to understand that, you know, that these culverts were seen as critical, or if we didn't address them soon, they could become critical. It was hard to gain a sense of priorities. It was hard to gain a sense of potential costs associated with these. And so I'm really glad that we are reviving the Local Road Advisory Committee to, to help address these questions and provide information, and maybe push the road commission for, to offer more information about their own priorities. But with costs that will help us understand what's critical now, what can wait. Thank you.
Well, I need to add another piece to the DDA reason when I mentioned the water. It wasn't just Gellman, that was a major from the east, but it was discovered also a contamination out off of Enterprise Drive on the west side of our township. So here we have, that's why it went further west, because Gellman obviously hasn't gone that far out, but there was a site out there. So just to clarify the why that the water went all the way down Jackson Road, the district.
Are there further comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees? Are there comments from members of the public participating remotely?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. Mary Gillis.
Mary, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is Mary Gillis, I live at 560 Little Lake Drive. And so I'm keeping track of things like the culverts on Little Lake and Parkland Plaza, and also the sidewalk going in. And when you tabled this conversation a few meetings ago, the issue was raised about coordination between the construction team working on the sidewalk and the construction team working on the culverts. And I want to make sure that that is going to happen, and maybe if you can say, someone could say a word about how that would happen. I mean, they seem to be people from completely different places, as far as I know. I'm not, I'm not sure who, who's working on these things. And so is there, is there one person who can make sure these people are talking to each other? Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. I see no other hands. Will?
I, I can respond in that, this issue was raised with the Washtenaw County Road Commission, and the response was that because of what's being done is relining the culvert, that the impact on the sidewalk project will be minimal. You know, I suppose there could be some, you know, bumping into each other, but it won't be as if they were ripping out the culverts and having to put in a whole, entire new culvert, which is, would have been much more disruptive and potentially could have interfered with the sidewalk project of Parkland Plaza. Obviously, the culvert on Little Lake Drive would pose no problem in terms of, either way, in terms of the sidewalk project, because the sidewalk project doesn't go there. But, but that is a very good point. We'll have to make, make sure that there is communication between the two construction projects. If there are no other comments from members of the public, is someone ready to make the model motion? This is the motion, this would be, just to be clear, the motion to approve the agreement with the Washtenaw County Road Commission to rehabilitate the two culverts at Parkland Plaza, Little Lake Drive, at an estimated cost of $102,500, subject to an action by the Downtown Development Authority for to fund the township's project cost. Is someone ready to make that model motion? Made, motion by Palmer, support by?
Well, support.
Support by Vogel. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Flintoff? Yes? Corto?
Yes.
Jerome? Jerome, you're on mute, Jerome? We'll come back. Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Jerome?
Oops, we lost him.
I, I think it's, he may just be off video. Nope, we lost him.
Entirely?
Yes, he does not appear to be on right now. The motion passes. Oh, here he is.
Be fast.
Alec? Alec?
Do you want to cast a vote?
I, I'm yes, I was disconnected.
Thank you, Alec. Seven zero.
Okay. That brings us, thank you, that brings us to item J six. This is possible action to establish positions of assistant fire chief, fire marshal, and establish fees to implement a fire prevention program. Can you be more? Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm ready. This is a couple of the next two steps in the process. I'm approving our assistant chief as a part-time position in order to require a full-time position for days to authorize.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jane's indicating she can't hear. Andy, would you be so kind to stand back a few feet? And, yeah, and try that. Yeah.
Does that work better?
Okay, next two components of the project.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Good.
Next two components of the project. The assistant chief position currently exists as a part-time position. Board would need to authorize that to be a full-time permanent position. And secondly, after review of the board's movements with equity for all businesses, we looked at 2.2 cents per square foot, which is on the corporate. Those are the two components that are on the budget. Still to come back to the board, we would need ordinance amendment to clarify in the firefight code, we can charge that fee, I'm sorry, clarify in the ordinance, we can charge this. And then second, update our firefight, our current firefight code, 2000 edition of NFPA, which is obsolete. You'll see this soon in the future, but I'd recommend we go with the IFC 2015 version that mirrors state building code. So the two roads would be compatible and work with each other. And then, once all these steps are in place, I'd be back for looking for the board to authorize me to enter a groupie for the position. But again, stay in front of you, just the 2.2 cent fee for service and reading the intention that it's full-time.
Are there comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees? Oh.
Just briefly, I just wanted to clarify for, or just add on, chief. When you say that the current assistant chief is part-time, I want to make sure the public understands that our, our current assistant chief is a paid-on-call, temporary-on-call hourly position, just as our other paid-on-call firefighters are. So gets an hourly rate plus a $375 a month stipend for serving as assistant chief. So we're not currently paying for the benefits or the full-time. I fully support this, but just want to be clear that that $375 a month would go away.
Correct, yep. The board would adopt this. Once we end that position bill, it's actually been my discretion to fire and fire paid-on-call positions, so that assistant chief paid-on-call position would go away.
Andy, or Chief Hood, although it's helpful, could you, I think standing up help, but if you actually get closer to Jessica's mic, because she is the mic that's active, unfortunately, I'll put you on screen, but it might be easier for the public and ourselves to hear.
Might just be this, this one.
Sure, is this in this button?
Sounds great now.
Fair enough.
You could like pull it down, and they could be like one of those guys in the, you know, wrestling band.
There we are.
There we go.
All right.
And would you, were able to hear, or do you need another synopsis?
If you could reiterate like the last minute that you were just talking about with the 22 cents that you were talking about for the fee structure, and then the position, I think that would be helpful for the public and the trustees.
Okay, sure. So the steps I'm asking for tonight, create the position as full-time permanent, and enact a fee of 2.2 cents per square foot per inspection. The other components, ordinance amendments will come back. We just about have them ready, who are ordinance adjournments. These two steps today, and happy to answer any questions the board made.
Trustee Vogel. Oh, we're not hearing you, you're, you're not, we're not getting audio.
Okay, so Chief Hood, I, I support this. It seems like the right direction to be moving in. When you come back, I, I just feel like as a board, we are, we are flying so blind without any financials, any sense of budget, any sense of actuals to budget. I would value seeing some financials on this. I hear a number about a fee per square foot. What does that generate? How much of, how much of the cost of this is covered by that revenue stream? It's just so important to, to see some numbers connected with this. The, the words are good, it's great to see some numbers on paper and have it add up.
Sure, so I included a brief synopsis in the packet. My estimate is that this fee structure would bring in approximately $127,000 once fully up and running, and I estimate the position adds $129,000 expense.
All right, and is that all new to the budget? Is it neutral to the budget? It's, it's those kind of questions, because that's what we don't see. And, and until that can get resolved, we don't see it.
It's all in the packet, Jane. Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, that would be, the, the fee would essentially offset the position, and we would see cost savings by elimination of the assistant chief paid-on-call position. Last year, we expended around $20,000 for that position, so we would see those savings as well.
Thank you. I, I saw that in the packet, and I just wanted to sort of confirm and hear it directly. So thank you.
I, Jane, I think we, this, we had a presentation on this at a prior meeting, and I'm wondering if, and, okay, all right. Trustee Corto.
Thank you. I, I actually do appreciate that there is a helpful cost breakdown here, Chief Hood. But I, so just to clarify, the, the, once you ramp up to doing all the inspections, it sounds like the, the fees will fully fund the position, except there's about a $2,000 gap. But during that ramp-up period, how are you proposing to fund this? And again, I fully support this, I'm just curious, is that going to come from fire department budget? It sounds like part of that will be from cost savings from that $20,000. But, but are you going to be looking to ask for general fund to cover a part of that? How, how do you anticipate covering that gap during the ramp-up period?
Well, right now, we have budgeted for temporary employees $180,000. And as of last time I checked, we've expended about $26,000, but we can reallocate some of that money as well.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Are there additional questions or comments? In that case, are there any comments from members of the public?
Members of the public, please raise your Zoom hand. I see none.
In that case, is someone prepared to make the model motion? I guess, do we have two model motions here?
Correct. The first is a resolution on the fee schedule?
So of, of the two motions, is someone prepared to make the first motion for the fee schedule? This, I'll read it out, I'll, I'll read it out, so we understand what we're moving here. So moved by Jerome, and support by Corto to adopt the resolution to establish fees for fire inspections at, I think that's meant to be 22 cents per square foot.
No. It's 2.2 cents.
Oh, really? Okay, I'm sorry.
That's, it's written correctly.
All right, I just thought it was, it was type over something. All right, 2, 2.2 cents per square foot for fire inspections, with the ability of the fire chief or assistant chief to waive the fee for 501(c)(3) nonprofit businesses, charitable, religious entities, or for a good cause. So that's the, that's the motion to adopt that resolution. Please.
Yes. Flintoff? Yes? Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Second, to establish the position of assistant chief as a full-time permanent position within the fire department, with final job description to be finalized and returned to the board for approval. Is someone ready to make that motion? Moved by treasurer Palmer, support by trustee Corto. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Flintoff? Yes? Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Thank you, chief.
The next item is new business, possible action to establish a temporary part-time administrative assistant position. And this is also in the fire department.
Yes, and I think Diane Benson was going to present, I don't, oh, here she is. Ah, Diane, stuck in there. All right, bringing Diane in as a panelist. There, I'm home now.
We're on the move.
Yeah, so I'm going to try to share my screen. Here we go. Nope, can't do it. Never mind. Oops. Okay, I'm not going to do that. I tried to transpose from a Microsoft Word document to Pages, and it is a little bit messy. You do have the first draft that I had in your packet, where I met with Chief Hood, and we talked about what it is that he needs now that the fire station is almost completed, and he has some funds in the budget for an, an admin assistant-type position. So we're looking at proposing a 20-hour-per-week position with funding that would take through next spring. The administrative assistant will provide general office support, and this primarily is so that the firefighters can do their job of firefighting fires, et cetera, and not doing the office work. This person will be the front face of the, of the fire department. Shear, he will do some event planning, including the, the annual Halloween party, which is returning. And a big project is going through and organizing all the departmental files. Some other events, other things to have this individual do is coordinate the payroll processing, and making sure that all the timesheets are completed, they're approved by the, the right approvers, they're turned in to the township so that people get paid appropriately, purchasing of the supplies, making sure the trucks are maintained, that there's schedules of maintenance is taken care of, developing a system for monitoring certifications for the firefighters, and let's see, and also tracking continuing education for the firefighters, which is quite important. And once, when we do have the assistant chief and the fire prevention program, this individual would work with that, with the fire prevent, prevention program, doing the billing and things like that. So we're looking for somebody with some administrative experience, somebody with excellent customer service, someone who's proficient in all the Microsoft Office Suite programs, someone that's able to work independently and cooperatively, and excellent verbal and written communication skills. So that's about it for this. So that's about it for this position. Are there any questions? Diane, could I just ask that you share a little bit about the temporary nature of it? And what asks you might anticipate happens when the administrator comes and all the other administrative needs? Right. Thank you. This is a temporary position with the funding that the chief has. Once we do have the township administrator onboard, there is the hope and expectation that that individual will, as the, I call it the chief of staff, will work with all the administrative support positions in the township so that there is coordination. If the fire department needs some help, they'll get their help. If utilities needs help, they'll get the extra help and, and so on. So this will be, you know, a more shared services operation with the township administrator since most of the positions will report to that person. And this is a temporary position right now with no benefits. So it's just straight salary.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the board or trustees? Or comments from members of the public?
Please raise your Zoom hand. I see none.
In that case, is someone prepared to make the model motion to establish the position of temporary part-time administrative assistant at a rate of $20 to $25 an hour to be funded through Fund 206 for fire and other appropriate funds if work is assigned out for other departments?
I'll make it.
Okay, motion by trustee Noel, support by trustee Corto. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That brings us to item K2. It looks like a mountain. And this is possible action, approval of regular meetings of Scioto Township Board of Trustees for 2022. And I will turn to Clerk Flintoff to introduce this item.
Sure. So this is annually something the board does every fall to establish its regular meeting dates and times for the coming year. I included in, the provision in the first draft, which we have not deliberated on. And it really outlines what we have done for years and years, thanks to the work of Fran Summa, administrative clerk. The only change to practice is the additional consideration of major non-Christian holidays. We considered major holidays of Christian, Jewish, Hindu, and Muslim faiths. Those are the most practiced faiths in Wasna County. And again, it keeps with the longstanding tradition of board, regular board meetings, Tuesday, second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, beginning at 7:00 PM. And that's what the schedule does throughout 2022. We also consider township holidays. Those are marked with an H or in yellow. And in consideration of election days, as we always do, we have two or three next year. Those are marked in green or with an E. And in considering all of those and the planning commission and all the other regular committee dates, framing through the whole analysis, the board is able to keep its second and fourth Tuesdays of the month for every month until we get to November 2022. And then there's a, we would move our regular meeting date to the 15th, the middle there, and just have one meeting in November. We could always add a meeting, but the idea was that we would have one meeting there with the holidays. And one meeting on December 13th, because that fourth would be the 27th, which again is typically a holiday week. And I wanted to, I asked Fran to prepare it and bring it for today just in case any member of the board wanted to say, you know, no, Wednesday's at 6:00. Or something like that to give us time to have that conversation if needed.
Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Corto.
Thank you. It's great to have this laid out in advance. I'm fine with, you know, the tradition of the second and the fourth Tuesdays. I'm just a trifle concerned about having two months with only one meeting each month. So I, I almost wonder whether we should just go ahead and block off November 29th because then it still would be in every other week's schedule. But, you know, then we would have our, our longer break over at the end of December.
Yes, that's just fine. It won't conflict with anything.
So you're proposing that we add November 29th as a regular, sort of a regular, regular meeting?
Yes, exactly.
What we could change? If we do that, my thought would be to consider changing November, just go back to the second and the fourth.
We can't because the second Tuesday in November is election day.
That's, that's the imperative.
Okay. But it still gives us two weeks then before the next, the December meeting. So we're still every two weeks.
If we did what we did last December, we met every week. We've had it again. Just kidding.
Okay. Well, who knows what Gellman will be then, right?
I suppose. It was sort of driven by that.
But to be clear, those would be special meetings. These would be the ones we have on our calendar. Everybody knows about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or suggestions? I guess this is an action item. Are there any comments from members of the public?
Please raise your Zoom hand. I see none. And, and Will, I would just suggest the model motion would be to adopt the attached schedule as amended.
Okay, so this is here?
Mm-hmm.
As amended.
So moved.
So we have motion by Jerome, support by, oh, Corto. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Brings us to new business item K3, possible action, Trubadoo Smooch Redevelopment Project Grant Amendment between Eagle and Scioto Township DDA. And as I mentioned in my report earlier in the meeting, the, the DDA board did vote to approve acceptance of this additional funding from the state for this project. This is basically doubling the amount of the grant. And we have with us, I believe, still remotely, Anne Jamison Urina? I'm not sure how to pronounce the last part of the name. And I don't know if Holden Branch is with us or not.
I'm looking, I don't see Holden, but bringing in Anne.
Okay.
Good evening. Hi, how are you all?
Oh. So if there are
I sort of patched out for a second, so sorry about that, if you needed me to lead in.
No, that's okay. I was just introducing this agenda item. And I explained that it was, it's additional funding from the state. They had some funds at the end of their fiscal year and were able to re, sort of redistribute them and chose to redistribute some to this project, basically doubling the amount of the grant. This is allowing, if I remember correctly, or I understand correctly, for kind of remediation of the soil that is contaminated. The other part of the grant, the earlier part of the grant was to deal with the vapor intrusion within the building. And this is dealing with the soil contamination that's outside of the building.
That's correct. Since the original contract was awarded with Eagle, we've met with their team several times to hash out the approach on the work plans and basically what they needed further evaluation on in terms of designing the vapor mitigation system. And during those conversations with district technical staff, as we were going through everything, this available money came, you know, this money became available. And Eagles of the practice, that if they have additional funds that they can put towards removal of existing contamination, so this is what we call a source area. We know that, that chemicals that have been used in the operations of the building at one point had been discharged into the drains within the facility and ended up in a old septic, well, it was, it ended up in their septic field, which now has been closed. They're connected to the main. There's no releases coming from that building anymore. But the, the soil itself, the, basically the origin of the vapor concern, we're going to be doing further delineation, assessment, and removal of that with these additional funds. So it was, we were in a very fortunate position to receive those additional funds. It's pretty unusual that Eagle says at the end of a fiscal calendar year, we have more money for you. So everybody was pleased, especially in the sense that we could do additional remediation on the site.
Are there, are there questions about the, you know, the project or the funds? Trustee Corto.
Thank you. Well, it's throwing that Eagle actually has more funds. But, so can you just clarify me, for me? If you are removing the soil that's the source area, are you going to pretty much be eliminating the problem? And then will you need the vapor mitigation system?
That's a great question, and I'm glad that you asked that. With the vapor mitigation, indoor air, volatilization to indoor air problems that we've been dealing with in Michigan, typically over the last, I would say, 10 years, they've been coming up with new standards to address how much needs to be removed in order to eliminate the necessity for an indoor air vapor mitigation system to be installed. Because the nature of the volatilization of these chemicals, essentially they weigh on the side of caution. So what will happen is it will be a series of verification sampling post-soil removal. And if there's any residual contaminants remaining in the soil that they suspect may have a negative impact on the indoor air quality in that building and/or if there's soils beneath the building that we can't access for structural reasons, then that would be why we would still potentially install that. This is a cooperative approach. This is not driven by the development team or their consultants. This is really driven by Eagle. And so their consultants work directly with Eagle. We do the oversight, third-party review, make sure that everything's been processed appropriately and making sure that everything's being included in work plans. So it's a pretty detailed, I would say, to a certain extent, extensive process just to make sure that everything's being done in a proper manner with up to Eagle standards and with their approval. So.
Thank you. I mean, I appreciate knowing that they will be maximally protective. I just was trying to understand the relationship of those two pieces.
No, that's a great question because it's not always straightforward with these things.
Other questions are, oh, Clerk Flintoff.
Yes, Anne, thank you so much for your work on this. A question, could you, a question and comment. One, could you describe what's involved with the third-party oversight activities? That went from 9,200 to 37,000 in
Yes.
And then it appears in your contract in the next item. And a second comment is just, I want to thank you for your good work with Newton and Rebecca. Please do stay in close contact with them, especially Rebecca. Ultimately, the township is responsible for the DDA fund. So just stay in touch with them and let us know if you need any support. So to the question.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And yeah, so basically my role is third-party oversight is a role that's required by Eagle. The, the way that the grants are administered, there is a series of checks that have to go through the process in terms of oversight management, et cetera. So really, third-party oversight involves working directly with the environmental consultants who are working with Eagle, being the liaison between their team, Eagle, and the community. So DDA and Scioto Township proper Board of Trustees. I'll be preparing and reviewing all work plans that go to Eagle prior to them being submitted to make sure that they've done an appropriate job in putting those work plans together. I'll be involved in coordinating, in discussions with Eagle to make sure that everybody's on the same page in terms of expectations. I'll be making sure that I, once the invoices start coming in, it's basically a three-part check. The development team will put together the subcontractor invoices, which then come to my table, my desk. I review all those and make sure that all of the invoices that they're submitting are, have been approved under the work plan, number one. Our grant eligible, number two, because there's certain eligible activities that aren't always eligible under these grants. And then I will be working directly with the folks appointed by the DDA, Newton and
Rebecca.
Rebecca. They will be doing a double check on the numbers, right? So we'll be putting all this into basically a spreadsheet. So Eagle requires that all the draws, requests, and quarterly reports get put into a spreadsheet that include, I have to verify if soil has been taken to a landfill. I have to make sure that I get the disposal tickets from that landfill. Make sure that that's all in the packet and that that soil was taken appropriately outside, as an example, right? I have to make sure that the billing is coming in correctly, that they're not billing mileage and they're billing a leased vehicle. It's either or, you know, little nuances of that nature, that things aren't marked up inappropriately. And then again, that they're, you know, basically following all of the protocols set forward. In my contract, I did lay out the detail to a certain extent, basically exactly what the rules are and expectations that have to be met by Eagle, but I was giving a couple of examples there. So once, once the invoices go through the DDA review and my third-party review, then it will go to Eagle for a final review. They will then do another two checks on the payment process. And then the funds will be electronically transferred to basically a special account within the DDA Scioto Township. It's set aside so that only those funds are coming in and out. So it's really clean, it's audible. And so, yeah, basically it's oversight management, making sure making sure everybody's doing what they should do and making sure everybody's coordinating and corresponding and discussing things that need to be discussed. So hiccups don't happen along the way.
Thank you, Anne.
That's, we're actually sort of stepping into the next agenda item. But that's okay because these are directly related.
They are.
But just, just to be clear, because this question came up at the DDA board meeting as well. There's no cost to the township, to the DDA or to the township proper. This is all funded, the third-party administrative contract that is part of the next item with Jamison Development Consulting is all paid for out of the grant funds. There's a budget within the grant for this purpose. And Eagle actually requires that there be this involvement. I mean, if it wasn't Jamison, you know, Development Consulting, it would be some other third-party administrative consultant that we would be considering for this. So it's actually very good to have someone who's been sort of guiding this project from the beginning and understands it available to do this.
I, I support it. I just wanted to understand the justification because we, just given that there's another line item, which is response activities, I always want to make sure we're very clear and can justify whatever we're not putting toward the direct response. So that makes sense. Thank you, Anne.
Yeah, no problem. You know, it's a set amount percentage that Eagle basically puts together these, the budgets. We really have limited, yeah. I mean, it basically is a 3% administrative fee for DDA and a 5% for third-party oversight on the total amount of the grant. And that's how it works in every community, in, you know, every situation, so.
And that's another good point. There's actually not only no money coming from the township, there's actually potential money reimbursing the DDA or I guess Rebecca in terms of hours spent on this work. So if we can keep track of time and other expenses, that's, am I correct, Anne, that that's all sort of billable back to the grant?
Yeah, absolutely, that's correct. And I'm going to be going through, we have a kickoff meeting next week already set up with Newton and Rebecca and Bob and to go through all of the details on who's responsible for what and how to set up your billing internally and all those items. Yeah.
Trustee Vogel.
Yeah, I just want to offer the observation. This is a really important discussion. It sounds like there's a work group coming up that will continue some important work. I'm aware that it's going on 11 o'clock and we've still got five or six items. I know I, I have to be up at 6:00 tomorrow for an all-day commitment and realistically looking forward to wrapping up. So asking if there's a way to kind of move us forward through these remaining agenda items.
Sure. Unless there's other questions, I think we've covered everything regarding the grant and actually the next item on the agenda, I think. Are there any, if there are no further comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees, are there any members of the public who have comments or questions?
I see none. Will?
In that case, is someone prepared to move the model motion for agenda item K3, which is that the Board of Trustees approves the amendment to the Eagle Grant to the Sciop Township Downtown Development Authority and authorizes this advisor to sign the revised grant agreement to accept increased funding for a total of $740,695 to the Troubadour Smooch redevelopment project. Moved. Moved by seconded by Corto. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And
Thank you, Anne.
Well, actually, Anne, we might want to stay for the next item.
Sorry.
This is the model motion for the next item on the agenda, item K4, that Eagle Brownfield Renew Michigan Grant Oversight and Management for Troubadour Smooch Redevelopment Homes Project. This is the third-party agreement, third-party oversight agreement with Jamison Development Consulting. The motion is that the Board of Trustees accept the proposal from Jamison Development Consulting, JDC, approved by the Downtown Development Authority Board for third-party administration of the Troubadour Smooch Homes Redevelopment Project. Is anyone ready to make that motion? Moved by Palmer?
I'll support.
Support by Noel. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Anne.
I look forward to updating you as we progress.
Thank you.
Bye.
That brings us to agenda item K5, which is possible action on a 10-feet-forward detailed engineering review, SP number 21006. And this is an item that came from the Planning Commission. Trustee Corto, do you want to introduce?
This was a fairly straightforward site plan that the Planning Commission looked at. As you can see in the packet, there were some questions about the storm sewer and the parking and some questions about use, all of which it looks like they've satisfactorily resolved. So I think the concern here is just making an existing building more usable for the, for current tenants or new tenants. And it's, I, I think the Planning Commission had no concerns about this. It was considered a pretty straightforward site plan.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the, trustee Jerome?
Yes, trustee Corto, do you know, obviously you're working on this, are they intending to include any sustainability measures in the addition that they're proposing, the two-story addition?
Thanks for that question. It's a great one. Trustee Jerome, and I'm sorry, I have, it's been a couple of months. I should have gone back to those plans. But they were not, they were not using a lot of sustainability measures. We tried to encourage some of that, but as just a, for the kind of construction, there, there weren't a lot of levers that we had to encourage the sustainability.
May I speak to this?
All right, I assume because they're using probably the same mechanical systems.
Why didn't know we had someone here representing the project?
Monica Ho, is that right?
Yes, Monica Huff Forward and Jeff Forward.
Okay, Monica and Jeff, I'll bring you in as panelists. Excuse us, we didn't know that you were here. Our apologies.
Oh, that's okay. Sorry, we, we are the owners of 10 Feet. Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Hi, sorry about that. Yeah, we are the owners of 10 Feet.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. It's actually, it's a one-story addition. It is primarily a shop space. So in terms of sustainability, the only things that we've kind of been approached with has been, you know, LED lighting. We are reusing or maintaining the existing heating and cooling systems. So there wasn't a lot left open there.
The mechanical systems might be overlaid, so that's fine. I just, just wanted to ask the question. I'm sure that the Planning Commission asked as well, so I'm very confident in that fact.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there a plan to replace the trees that would be removed?
Yes, there's a pretty extensive landscape plan that the township is requiring us to have, I believe it's 23 trees planted and 136 shrubs before we get all done with this. So, yeah. Yeah, that's what we said was wow. We don't really understand where they're going to go, but we'll figure that out.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Do we have any members of the public who have commented?
Any Zoom hands? I see none.
Is someone prepared to make the motion that the Township Board of Trustees approve SP number 2006? How's that right? I think that's a typo unless this is, it don't match. It must be 21006. 10 feet forward to construct a 2,849 square foot addition to an existing two-story, 4,934 square foot building at 8110 Jackson Road, based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, provided the minutes of their regular meeting held on August 9th, 2021.
I'll move.
Support by Corto. Support by Jerome.
It is captured as site plan 21006 on the agenda.
Yeah, so that's a typo. I'm glad we caught that. It was in the model motion correctly. In that case, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks for hanging with us here.
No problem. Thank you. Have a great night.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.
That brings us to the items that were moved from the consent agenda.
Payment of the bills.
Yeah, the first one is payment of the bill, item I1. And there was a question, trustee Vogel, I think you asked to move this, perhaps you would like to
Right, I, yeah, given, given that it's a different deck now, I can't get back to the page number I had written down. So it was just that $46,000 expense. It looked like it might have been election equipment or something. It just, given the amount, I thought it would be helpful to understand a bit more about it.
Oh, sure. Yes, Jane, $46,238.10. That's what we approved at the last two meetings ago, I believe.
That's what I was wondering, is it that whole discussion we had two weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's that amount for that maybe. And, and just as a reminder for everybody, everything on here goes through our procurement policy. So everything's been approved at the proper level, obviously prior to hitting the deck.
So good with that. Thank you.
In that case, are you prepared to make the model motion to approve the payment presented and accept the previous check run report?
Sure.
Moved by Vogel.
I'll support.
Support by Noel. I guess this is now an action item. Is there any comment from members of the public?
I see none.
Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
That brings us to agenda item I2. This is approval of the First Amendment to the Granicus Contract to ease digital access to township meetings and records. And I think this was pulled by two different trustees. I think it was, was it Jaclyn? Was it you who moved this from the consent agenda? What was, what were, and Jane, I know, but Jaclyn was first, I think. Jaclyn, what were your concerns or questions?
Thank you. Well, so I think it would be helpful to, to like really focus on the issues and options before the board here around the performance of Granicus overall. It's an expensive program. And so to put into perspective this amendment, it would be really helpful to know how much are we paying for the program as a whole? How much are we actually using it? Are we getting our money's worth for it? Are commission chairs and, and secretaries able to engage and use it? It is a complicated program. It seems like maybe not everybody's engaging. But, but in terms of this specific amendment, I'd really like to know like what proportion of the total annual Granicus cost is going to be this new module? And then who will be trained and how? And let me just finalize by saying, you know, we pay a lot of money for technology that's always changing, that can be difficult for it to use. And that there's an expectation put on our staff and our volunteers and our commissions for having to keep up with all of this. And, and so I just want to really ensure that we're getting a good value for the cost of continued and increased investment in this program.
Yes, thank you, Jackie. So a bit of background information. So December 2019, we entered into a contract. After an extensive RFP process, I wrote all this detail. We paid $18,000 for the initial setup of the CMS behind the website. And that included all of the training customization and everything. It is $4,900 a year for the website, for the CMS, the website that you see. And the CMS on the backend, we use it in-house a lot. Like when people apply to things, there's databases, there's maps, there's information there. But the public sees a website. The second component that we pay for at $7,000 a year is the Peak Agenda Meeting Management Software. And I described in the background to the public, what that is, are those constantly live and updated links in multiple places about the agenda, minutes, meetings, video, any other thing attached that comes up in those. Right now it comes up in those columns, upcoming meetings, past meeting records, things like that. So that's the Peak plugin into the website. The website itself and Civic Plus and all these other big ones that do this, they all kind of sell these two components separately. You'll notice the county has that too. And so when we went through all the vendors, the pricing, the way that they split up these components, Jackie, was really quite similar. So the Peak is almost necessary to make your website a good website for a body that administers a lot of meetings. Now, what the real value of Peak is, is really, as I said, it's really Christie, Fran and I who use it the most. So it's all about meeting scheduling, about the materials up. And I hear what you're saying about the committees. I think we were, we, we reached out to committees first in February of 2020, thinking that we'd be able to engage them. And certainly, I mean, I remember having a first conversation with Tom Off as we were getting shut down by the pandemic. So certainly, I don't think at this point there's a lot of value in the committee members using it a ton. Some people like to use it, some people don't. As our meetings get more complex, as the board meeting is, the planning commission meeting is, the real value of Peak as clerk is archives, files. Prior to this, we had meeting packets that would be printed and scanned so that they weren't OCR readable, they weren't ADA accessible. Having things in Peak means that people of different abilities can actually read them and the assistive technology plugs into that. And that's one of their guarantees. And they're constantly keeping up on that technology. So I would say, Jackie, the point of Peak isn't, it's secondary benefit for the committee chairs and, and for others. I want to get that rolled out more. But the primary reason is legislative history archive, all of these records that we have permanently, you know, Will uses it to help assemble the agenda and Andy and others for the board meetings. So it's also more efficient in terms of collaboratively pulling together a big meeting. What Peak doesn't do right now, so, so there's, you know, kind of a simple thing, like a committee agenda and then a more complex meeting such as a board. What Peak does not do was not designed to do without this third plugin, this third service, as all of these are packaged, is to provide archived videos that are integrated with the agenda's materials and minutes. And so, I mean, it's super cool. And it's something that I've heard a lot of you say that you want. And that it's like a video, you know, and you've probably done this if you've looked at public meetings from bigger jurisdictions. You're watching a video and you can click on the agenda item or you're in an agenda or materials and it goes You're watching a video and you can click on the agenda item or you're in an agenda or materials and it goes right to the point in the video. And so it's completely integrated. That's number one. Number two, there's the option, it, it, it live casts. So right now, we don't live cast. We could live cast through YouTube or other things, but there's challenges there. Right now, we use Zoom. And so by live casting, what would happen is people could go to our website and say, just start watching. And this would be set up and we could, you know, it's up to each committee on if they want to record their meetings, live cast their meetings. That's a public body by public body determination. But the technology would be here so that people could live cast. So let's say somebody didn't want to log into Zoom, but they just wanted to watch the meeting. They could just watch it from there. Also, there wouldn't be the laborious, clumsy process. And I explained it in detail because I think that, you know, in some board meetings, when some colleagues have raised questions about where'd the videos go, where'd the videos go? It's, it's confusing because we, you know, integrated about four different things over the last two years. We used to just have a broken WordPress website and we all met in person, if you can remember that far back. And so this would, it would have the videos there in real time and instantly. Instead of what we have now is this really laborious process of going from Zoom, downloading, putting it to the server, uploading it to Granicus, and then it's not even associated anyway. So Jane, I know you've asked me, where are the videos? Why aren't they side by side? You know, there's no way to do that. So the clunky kind of public presentation that we have of it would, would be there too. The, the third thing it would do, which is, I think, less important, but could be helpful, is it's, it automates the minutes much more so that it could be, you know, taking minutes on the computer. Clearly, I'd have to do something about the sound of the keyboard. But the real value would be videos and integrating them with the records, as well as live casting and saving a lot of Christie, Fran and my time doing things that really should be automated.
So what's the...
So trustee Corto, or I'm sorry, were you, were you finished?
I'm sorry.
I was just saying, thank you.
Okay, trustee Vogel?
In, in three words or less. I just was trying to get the incremental cost per year.
So it would be $5,300 one time and then $8,832 annually. And the, the one time is the encoding appliance that they would have to install here.
So I'm sorry, I was looking at the numbers. Are there any other comments or questions? Trustee Jerome?
I just want to be absolutely clear. And this is excluding the third module that potentially you're suggesting to...
No, this is the third module I'm describing.
Third module, okay. Just want to make absolutely clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, trustee Vogel?
I, I will offer the observation. This impresses me as very expensive. We're, it, it's all still fairly new, hit us during COVID, don't have our boards and commissions fully in the game yet. With this level of investment, $18,000 for an initial, $12,000 a year for the first two modules, I think we need experience with this system. We need feedback at an appropriate interval from our boards, commissions, and incremental $8,000. Well, it would be $13,000 the first year and $8,000 some every year after impresses me as a very big number.
It's just, yeah, and it's, you know, this, this is what things cost. When we did a very robust search and, you know, these, these companies really do charge about the same for this ongoing service. So I can't say if we went with someone different that it would be any cheaper. Granicus provides outstanding service, training. And it's really just a question of if the board, I've heard some board members say they want the public to be able to watch the meetings from our website. I've heard, you know, so, so that's one thing. I've heard, I've heard people say, you know, we want to, to integrate the videos with some of our permanent records. We don't have any way to do that in a, in a reliable way. And so this was something that, you know, Jim Murdy and I and Christie reviewed. It's excellent. It's been used in major cities, city of Ferndale, others, city of Ferndale, I wasn't citing as a major city, even more major than Ferndale. But I also thought of a close one. So it's been used for years. It's been around for about, you know, 10, 15 years. So it's up to the board, you know, if you want to add this. If not, we can keep, you know, doing the same awkward thing we currently do. But we will not have videos up. And there will just be limits to how we can roll videos up. I do think, given the world we're in now, the expectation of the public is that there are videos of committee meetings. I don't think we have to, but I think more and more are going to want to. I know the Sustainability Task Force has started recording and we can't post. So it's really up to the board.
So I saw a hand raised, two hands raised now, but I also am aware that Treasurer Palmer was trying to get a word in. So I, I want to turn to Donna first.
Well, my, I, I'm sharing the same feelings that Jane has said, the question that Jackie has raised. It is very, very expensive. You know, there's all kinds of really good things to do. But we can't always do them all. And I, I look at this as kind of frosting on the cake. How, how many times will videos be accessed and used? We don't have any way of knowing unless we can get something from other entities.
I, I do have some, some data. I mean, I, I will say, you know, about 200 people have looked at the videos that we have. You know, per, per meeting. No, probably not.
Because right now, there's just so much going on and many things have been very, I don't want to say controversial, but there's been really concerning input and questions.
Mm-hmm.
That's forever, I guess. Lot of money.
So I want to go in order of hands I saw raised. I think trustee Jerome first.
Sure. So I actually am in favor of the functionality, but I would like, it is a large cost. So I guess what I'm really most concerned about is sort of a phased approach. I would love us to, because I know there's been a workaround that's worked temporarily to address loading up the videos. So it still existed and we can still do that. But if I want, if, if I'm to be in favor of expending this amount of funds on this functionality, I would want to make sure that the commissions and committees and us are fully utilizing the initial modules that we purchased before we go ahead and add another layer on. I think it's underutilized at this point. I do understand that it's important and I agree. I can see that it's, there's time savings. I'd like to investigate further. I just think it's premature. I would like to establish a comfort level with phase one, meaning what we have in place now, we've contracted for, before we go and procure another module. I guess that I want to make sure that we are mindful of the, the cost of the program and that we're also maximizing the utilization of the, you know, considerable costs we've already invested in it. As I said, I think there's merit in it, but I would like to see it, what, you know, appreciate 100% of usage previous to, to going on and adding additional modules.
So trustee Corto and then trustee Noel. You're muted.
Sorry. Thank you. Just, just a quick couple of follow-up questions to put those costs into perspective. So this would be from the general fund technology cost allocation. Do you have an idea of what, what we have budgeted for that for the year and what we've already spent? Given that we have had some computer purchases, first of all, and second of all, i-if we were to put this on hold for a little while as we're really maximizing the use of our other components, do you have an idea of whether the subscription costs are anticipated to go up next year?
Sure. This is within budget and the cost allocation would be distributed across the funds as we talked about at budget time. This, this type of technology was anticipated at budget time when Jim put that together. Secondly, there's about a 3% increase typically in the overall Granicus contract, 3% increase per year. The, I do want to respond to one of Alex's points. This is the, how much each committee chair generates their agenda in Peak or sends it to Christie to post? It is, it doesn't have any bearing on how much this component would be used. So, so for example, it's, it's, I'm asking for the sense of the board. Do you think that, say, LPC would want to have their meetings live cast? The DDA have their meetings live cast? Because there's that functionality alone. What you wouldn't get if you just put together, let's say Bob puts together his agenda on a Word document and Christie posts it. You can get the live cast. You can have the agenda and the materials. What you wouldn't get is an agenda that has everything indexed throughout it, right? So that you're looking at an agenda with hyperlinks and little pictures of videos of moments, right? As you would in a board of trustees or planning commission. And you may not need it for something like the DDA. It's not a very long meeting. So, so what I'm saying, Alec, is how much the committee members are or are not generating the agenda in Peak is less important than the fact that all of their stuff's in Peak and it's all searchable and part of the archive.
I appreciate the comments. I, I guess I am looking to understand whether or not, and I would advocate for a common vernacular amongst committees, commissions and, and the board so that there's clarity for basically any resident and/or trustee that we go and look at these things, that they would be a uniformity to all of them. So I, I understand that there's nuances to how it would be integrated. But I guess by just asking the question, it's clear that we don't, we, we don't actually have a specific answer. And I guess I would like to talk to all the interested parties beyond just the trustees to get their input prior to making a decision. Not saying that I'm not, as I say, I'm actually for the concept of it rather than against it. I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of our fiduciary duty as well as our integrating our partners and our commissions and committees, whether they use it 100%, 5%, 10%. They do an incredible amount of work for us and I would hate to not integrate them and give them the attention and respect that they deserve to be asked for their input because they may or may not want it included and/or would seek it as well.
Trustee Noel, I don't want to lose track of your desire to come in or pose a question.
Thank you. Well, I just have some general comments. I think that there is an expectation among the public that SIO will continue to try to modernize and embrace some of the current technologies that are available. I think people do expect this and they want it. We have started this process. Jim Murdy and Jessica did do research on this issue. They did do a presentation previously to the board. And I think that this is an important thing to continue to foster and nurture. I, as to how the various committees and commissions might utilize it, I can't answer that because I think that there are varying levels of knowledge and comfort among the various committees. And we don't know, but right now, I mean, with technology. So we, some of us are more adept than others. And it's going to vary and there is going to be a learning curve. I think we should accept that as a board and continue on the path that we have started on. I think that Jessica has done an excellent job incorporating some of these newer technologies. She has interwoven them into the township meetings, the records. I, I think we should support this as a board. And I think that we shouldn't take a step backwards. I think we should continue to move forward and support it.
Are there further comments or questions from members of the board of trustees?
I agree with Alex's thought. We need to investigate how others can use this. And do they feel that was money well spent? I really want to know because we might be able to get some fee for this. Everything sounds great. Concept sounds fabulous. All money. And that $8,000 a year for support is way beyond anything we have ever spent for all of our data processing programs in, in the township. And those programs I'm talking about are all of our records, general ledger, payroll, everything. That's way beyond. For one program. That's way beyond. I think we need to explore, talk to other people who have used it. Do they feel it was money well spent over the time?
And, and just one, one thing, Donna, I will say, we talked with several communities who had used Granicus when we did the bidding process. And I, as, you know, even in San Francisco 15 years ago, they were using this very technology. I mean, it's, it's been around for a long time, but I, I'm, I'm happy to reach out to committees and, you know, see how interested they are in, in, in live casting and how much it might be used.
Trustee Jerome?
Yeah, just one quick comment. I just want to make sure, I, I won't speak for other trustees, but I want to make sure absolutely clear. And Kathy's saying, moving forward, I think all of us are in favor of the concept and, and the technology capabilities. I personally am suggesting that we have some more investigative work to do and that if we, if this was tabled for a meeting so that we could get input from our partners, that it would not be significant. No one here is suggesting that we want to take a step back. We want to be more inclusive and more progressive. So I just want to make sure that all of this discussion is not to say that we're not trying to progress the township and provide a better meeting format. I just want to make sure we're absolutely clear on that point.
Are there further comments or questions from members of the board of trustees? Are there members of the public who want to come?
Pam Boyd. Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. Pam Boyd.
Yep. I want to remind you that the viewerships of these meetings have increased 100-fold in many cases. We residents do want more access to this government. It isn't just the boards and committees that play a part in this. I'll also remind you that, much to my surprise, you guys approved $15,000 for a simple pavilion to house a picnic table at Marshall Park. That's a considerable chunk of change for a pavilion that was going to be built with reused materials. The benefit to public and to committees and boards with this implementation seems like as good or better of... seems like as good or better of spending $15,000 on one pavilion. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Kathleen Brand. Bob?
Thank you. Following Jane's concerns about the expense, the way I understand it, the CMS is four grand a year. The peak is seven grand a year and this now is eight plus grand a year. So it sounds like we're going from $11,000 a year to $20,000 a year for the subscriptions for these modules. For Alex's concerns, as a member of the public, a template of the agenda, the agenda packets, the way the, all of the committees function would be greatly appreciated. Each individual committee right now does everything a little bit different and it's hard to, since I'm attending so many meetings, it's hard to, it would be easier if there was a sort of template form. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Kathleen, followed by Michelle Cody. Kathleen?
Hi, this is Kathleen Brand. First, I want to thank Pam Boyd for giving a concrete example of the board approval, which is the amount of this software. I would ask the board to please take the recommendation of Jim Murdy and his work that went into this. You, you praised him profusely for his skill and knowledge in the IT realm. Myself, I've been in a consult for 20 some years. This cost does not strike me as exorbitant. It seems reasonable. When we have 50 or more people joining these meetings and other meetings and the clerk is spending so much time trying to do a convoluted process that even the software supplier was astounded at. That time could be spent standardizing uses of these new technologies. The residents wanted, I supported. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Michelle Cody. Michelle?
Hi, Michelle Cody, and I support this modernization. And it is what is expected nowadays anyway. Public records are normally available and transparency is very appropriate. I want to see the continuation of updating technology. It is the way of the world, like it or not, especially as it appears that CIO is growing rapidly. So easy access is quite necessary to include the people that are interested. And as other individuals have cited, there are more and more people paying attention. The ease of transparency is greatly appreciated. And I appreciate the thoughtful remarks of Pam Boyd, trustee Noel, clerk Flintoff, and the work that's gone into this consideration. So please do update. The cost is a very utilitarian expense to just simple management practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. There are no other interested public.
Well, I, I didn't comment earlier. I realized I'd been thinking about this. I've been thinking about the concerns that different trustees have raised. I think some of them are about the, you know, the overall kind of Granicus.
Agenda creation.
Granicus, the sort of, you know, sort of whatever universe that we're talking about here. And, and I think in some ways it's kind of mixing it together with this, with the, the video module. I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way to sort of back and do the kind of analysis that we're talking about, that Alec proposed. I, I, but I'm torn because I really do want us to have better functionality for the video record. And this seems like a step in that direction. And I, I hadn't focused on this before, but the possibility of, of streaming through the meetings, through the website, I think is, is a positive, a positive step.
And, and well, one thing there is it's really streaming from anywhere. You know, I mean, it's streaming, you know, it's a streaming capability from meeting hall and it removes it from Zoom. So there's events and other things now. Again, have to see if we would use it, but.
I suppose that's always the task. I don't know, I, I maybe the thing to do is to try and, is to table tonight, gather, you know, use that time between now and the next meeting to gather the information that Alec has described and then Jane, I think Jane as well described in terms of, you know, getting feedback from other users. And then bring this back at our, at our next regular meeting. Does that sound like a, a way of sort of dealing with this for the moment?
I'm fine with that.
I do appreciate this effort to try and solve the problem of making the videos, getting the videos up on the website and making them more accessible to the public because I think that's something that all of us are, are in agreement on.
Well, and I think the question I would then have for committees and commissions, because it's really up to each of them on if they want to record or not, right? And they're already doing Zoom, so some record, some don't. But the question is, do you want to livestream and record? That's pretty much going to be the questions for the committees and commissions in terms of figuring out if there would be value with enough users with this module.
Trustee Vogel. Jane, we're not hearing you.
Jane, we can't hear you. You need to unmute your phone, please.
I think we have some nice alignment around a direction here. And I think supervisor Hathaway is onto a good plan to postpone. I would alter that. I don't think one meeting is meaningful. I think we have, we have, we're in the midst of this pandemic. Our boards and commissions are still getting up a learning curve around Zoom, around all these protocols that are, that are being sort of sent out for them. I think this needs some number of weeks or short months to just let everybody settle in to these new protocols. We have got a way to get videos uploaded right now and to have them on the website with permanence. They're not going away. If you keep saying, Jessica, they are there, they are available. They're not going anywhere. If anybody needs to look at them.
I, I never said they, they went there. I was referring to a colleague who was confused about where they went. They, I, I.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
I, I'm just, to finish my point, I'm just making a comment about pace and I don't think a couple of weeks is what's required to let everybody settle in a little bit. I, I think it's a little longer than that.
Well, what are you proposing?
Because this would be implementation by January 2022. If, if we moved ahead and, and I'm, I'm open, really. I, I don't, you know, I mean, I'm just trying to.
Too much too fast. My gut feel, I hear our residents, they are very familiar voices. We have a whole bunch of residents out there. I think we're moving a little fast. I have communicated this to you, Jessica. I think we're, we're setting up a lot of hoops for our boards and commissions to jump through. And, and they're getting up to speed, but I will forever protect all of our volunteers doing work that they love and they care passionately about. And I don't want to bury them in a whole bunch of administrative requirements.
It's, it's.
Me, it's an issue of pace.
Okay. And I will say the administrative requirements have come with the pandemic and with laws that have been on the books for years. This, if we moved forward, I was, the way that we would implement it, it would take some time with, with NetSmart and Granicus doing the work here in this room. And so January 2022 would be a nice time to implement it for the board. And then I would say planning and then go from there as people are interested. So I'm, I'm supportive of tabling for whatever period of time people want to. But in terms of pace, to clarify, this would keep us on track to start in January 2022. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, there's obviously there's lead time to get it up and running. Trustee Jerome?
I just want to say, can we do the speaker before we do this module?
Really? It was really hard tonight.
Let's, but I mean, I'm, I'm just kidding, but let's, 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 let's master the speakers in the room before we start adding additional modules.
Yeah. And I want to apologize. Something, something changed yesterday in this room, so I do need to speak with, with, with Doug.
Stuff happens.
Yep.
Oh, I see. So during the planning commission, you think?
Something happened.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it sounds like we have consensus for allowing some time to gather input or information. I'm just not clear exactly what timeframe we're talking about and what sources of information we're talking about.
Why don't we do a, a motion to table? While we query the committees and commissions about their interest in live casting their video, their meetings and I mean, recording and live casting their meetings. Those are really the questions for the committees, I think.
So if there's a motion to table with that purpose in mind, there is no further discussion. Call a roll.
Can I ask, could, could I ask for a friendly amendment? Would, I think it'd also be helpful. I know that there's different aspects to the Granicus, but I think it would also be helpful to have the conversation at the same time. It's a good segue in terms of the use of peak and agendas and all the other capabilities of the Granicus. I think that conversation should be bunched together. I, I agree with your, your, your primary questions, but I think it's also important, you know, and, and Mr. Pattinson pointed it out. And I think it was pointed out by another individual that, I, I mean, I agree with trustee Vogel, they need some time. But I also think it's important to, I don't think they actually even realize some of the capabilities. So I wouldn't want to keep it exclusively to that one question. I'd like to, I would like to see us better utilize Granicus. So I, that's all I would say in terms of the week.
The peak agenda creation. I got you, Alec. That makes sense.
Query them a little bit more thoroughly.
Yep.
Okay. Trustee Jerome, we don't have a second?
The only other piece, the only other piece I would add is I would value understanding what peer communities are using this, not a San Francisco, probably a Ferndale is more comparable, but we need some reference, Ferndale, we need some reference points on other communities that we could possibly reach out and talk to.
Okay, I could send you some links. I will tell you again, we've had interviews with them, but you're welcome to call them as well. I will send links to places around here that use.
Share with us who you've talked with so we have a sense of confidence this is an industry standard. Or is this a one-off CIO is going to do? That, that's just the data I'm asking for.
It is an industry, they have about 2,000 clients there. So yes, I'll send you some of that.
So I would support Jessica's motion to table with a friendly amendment.
Okay, so we have an emotion. It's now been sort of modified and, and it has.
Seconded by Jerome.
Seconded by Jerome. So Flintoff, motion seconded by Jerome to table with all of the different pieces of information to be gathered about peak and so on. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Okay. This brings us to agenda item I eight, which is the appointment of or the nominations of, or no, I'm sorry, it's the appointments of of People to the Roads Advisory Committee. I was going to make a brief comment about this. I wanted to draw attention to the appointments of Todd Bailey, Ian Hubert, Gillian Carey, Catherine Noel, Rakesh Sharma, Patrick Shields, Linda Smith and Roy Townsend. Their nominations disturb on the newly reconstituted Roads Advisory Committee. I'm proud to nominate this group for the important work of studying the township's local roads and advising the board of trustees. The new committee charge is included in the packet. Later on the agenda, there are four roads that will affect the district. Obviously, we've already dealt with those, but among other things, this committee will be evaluating the township's SAB policies and procedures and making recommendations to the board of trustees. So I think, you know, there's a lot of opportunities in this committee and I, I think this is a good group of people representing a lot of different points of view and bringing a lot of different kinds of expertise to the situation. I recognize there was a, a, a question about residency, yeah, about residency for Todd Bailey and I'm sorry I didn't track on that. I I think it's really important to have a connection, a kind of a cross appointment, a joint appointment with the Downtown Development Authority. And Todd is the person on the Downtown Development Authority Board who has sort of stepped forward and is willing to play that role. If, if, if there's a need to sort of make a modification or an exception to allow someone who's not a resident, I know he's, you know, well, he's township. He also is a property owner in the Downtown Development District. I guess he's just not residing in the house that he owns there. But in any case, if there's a way to make that appointment work, I think that would, you know, make an important connection between the Downtown Development Authority and the Roads Advisory Committee. So that's, I just wanted to address that since it was raised during the public comments. But I'm not the person who pulled this off the consent agenda. Who was it?
I did.
Oh, you did. Okay.
Yeah. No, that's great, Will. I just wanted to hear, I think anytime we have nominations, especially to a newly formed charged committee such as this, it's just good to have it off the consent to have time to touch base about it. On the residency issue, I guess it's a question, you know, we put it in our charge that we adopted that people be residents. I do think that's important for our committees. I think it would have to be kind of an extraordinary exception to not have a resident. So I guess my question is, what other kind of DDA reps did you consider or do you see some other options there?
I really, I, I don't, I mean, I sort of, Bob and I kind of polled the DDA and, you know, Todd is the person who stepped forward and said that he was willing to, to do it.
Yeah, but he's not currently eligible.
Well, right. So it would take an exception in order to appoint him. I understand that. But I, I just, in terms of your question of who are the other options, there really are none on the current members of the board of the DDA to be a joint appointment. Trustee Noel?
Okay, a couple of things I just want to mention. My name is misspelled in the resolution, so that would need to be corrected, Will. It's okay, small issue. We worked long and hard on this charge. You and I did. We did have residency as a requirement. And I do think it's important. I want to mention that there were some other highly qualified applicants who did apply. And one was Bob Groton. He sent all of us an email about six weeks ago, five weeks ago.
Trustee Noel, I, I really, I'd really, really rather not go through the names of all of the.
Oh, I'm not going through all of them. I just want to mention that there, there are.
Just leave it at that instead of going.
Let me, Will, let me finish my thought of the basic. Well, let me finish my thought of the basic respect. There are other qualified people out there, that is my point. We have heard from one in particular who is really qualified with an automotive background. He's an MBA, extensive experience working with people at Ford Motor Company. He's highly qualified. He comes from a business background. I think that there are other qualified candidates out there, that's my point.
Trustee Jerome?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, I was saying, so I would ask that we, as a group, consider that residency was a requirement. We all approved the charge for this committee, and I think we can come up with some other qualified applicants, even if it isn't this one person, there are going to be some others out there.
Are you finished now? Didn't want to cut you off?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Jerome, then Trustee Corto.
I mean, I'm not against residency, obviously, but I will say that there should be some merit to a local business owner that doesn't reside in the township, that is actually committed to running a business, owning a property. Whether they actually sleep in that residence is, you know, I think there is merit to business owners on Jackson Road, and I would want, I want their perspective. I'm also, as I say, I favor resident applications as well. I just, I do think there's potentially some room in order to, and I guess, you know, I haven't, you know, to look at the diversity and the inclusion scenarios for this group, because it's really important to have that breadth of perspective. That can be offered by residents, it can be offered by business owners and the like. So I just, you know, I'm sympathetic to both perspectives, but I wouldn't want to just discount somebody, a longstanding business owner. Obviously, I'm not talking about somebody who is absent from owning the business, but there's, you know, there's gymnasiums, there's testing facilities, there's a myriad of businesses that reside in CIO, but they don't have residency in CIO as long or so. Just a point of information for folks.
Trustee Corto?
Well, perhaps one compromise here, because I, again, I value both views. I think it's residency is important, and also perspectives of business owners who, you know, do have their businesses reside here. Both are important. Could a compromise be to appoint the DDA member as a liaison and a non-voting member who would be participating, and then have another member who is a resident to be the voting member? That's a slight alteration of the way we set up, but we do have occasional special members of other commissions who are there to help that coordination function, even if they are not actively voting on what the commissions do. Because I think that, I really strongly believe we have to have that coordination with the Roads Committee and various of the other bodies that deal with roads, including the DDA, the Planning Commission, TAP, you know, all of that cross-connection is very important.
I tell you what, rather than trying to solve this right now in the moment, why don't we pull Todd's name from the list, appoint the rest of the nominees, and then I'll go back and I'll talk with the, you know, the DDA and see if I can't work with them to find somebody from the DDA. I really want to find someone from the DDA to put on as a joint appointment. And if it turns out that Todd is really the person, then we can bring it back and talk about what the solution is. But rather than trying to sort of craft something here right now at 11:12, I don't think we're going to be doing our best solution in the moment. Is that acceptable to appoint the rest of the group of nominees? Or were there other? Pardon?
I would support that.
Okay.
I would support that too, Will, provided that the person we bring back is a resident. And I, there's definitely, I, you know, I think about, you know, a resident who's a business owner and on the DDA would be ideal. But definitely, I feel strongly about the residency instead of the taxpayer. It's residency.
Okay, well, that's good input.
And I can support that too, Will. I think that there's a perception in the community that sometimes things have not been done according to the rules with the Roads Committee, and I think it's important for us to do it differently this time. Follow the rules, go through the process, and try to be a functional working committee and bring people together. So that is my hope. I know we have a diverse group, but I think we can all work together. And I would like to see our board insisting that rules be followed. So I'll leave it at that without going into details about some of the problems that happened in the past. You all know what they are. And I think this is an opportunity to do it differently and do it right.
Well, I just want to clarify, there was no intent to sort of skirt rules. I didn't realize that that was a condition. I didn't focus on that in the charge. So in any case, we're, we have a motion, a modified motion, that would be to have the appointment of the Board of Trustees approve the appointment of Ian Hubert, Gillian Carey, Kathleen Noel, Rakesh Sharma, Patrick Shields, Linda Smith, Roy Townsend to the CIO Township Roads Advisory Committee for terms of the appointment lasting four years with the following stipulations. I'll take out that one. Cat, I don't know how I got your name wrong. Kathleen Noel, at least I was consistent, will serve as the Board of Trustees representative to the Roads Advisory Committee for an appointment term of two years with the possibility of renewal, but no longer than her term of office as trustee. Rakesh Sharma's term will be no longer than his appointment to the Planning Commission, and Roy Townsend's term will be no longer than his appointment to the Transportation Alternatives Planning Committee. That's the motion. I guess the question is, did someone make it already, or am I just?
Did you just make it?
I just made it, I guess.
I'll support.
Okay. Motion by Hathaway, support by Jerome. Are there, I guess, other comments from the public?
Any comments from the public? First up is Pam Boyd. Pam?
What can I say here? This is not a good look for you guys. You're changing the rules before this board is, this committee has even started. You have to regain the residents' trust, and by trying to squeeze in somebody, I don't know Todd, I have no opinion of him, but you need to follow the rules. You need to gain the respect from residents, and I'm just embarrassed for you tonight.
Thank you, Pam. Any other hands? I see none. Will?
In that case, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes? Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes, 7-0.
That brings us to public comment. That is at the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any manner under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Jerome will continue to serve as timekeeper. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. We've got 12 party attendees, Jack Knowles, Gillian Carey, Joe Pattinson, Kathleen Brandt, Lori Beckefer, Mary Gillis, Michelle Cody, Pam Boyd, Rob Pattinson, James McDonald, and Paula Globertson. And I see no hands.
In that case, this year, voting to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Palmer, support by-
Jerome.
By Jerome.
All of us. Jackie, it doesn't matter.
All right. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah, good night, everyone.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned at 12:01.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for joining.